Good afternoon and welcome to the Mobile City Planning Commission for March 21st, 2004. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. This meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing session and then deliberation. In the public hearing session, an agenda item is called, an applicant makes their presentation, commission members ask questions, and members of the public make their comments to the commission. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four people against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. And at a one-minute remaining mark, you will have a warning bell or a beep asking you to summarize your comments. After opposition speakers have finished, an applicant will be allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the podium at the bottom of the stairs, speak into the microphone and provide your name and address for the record. Please direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all applications, we will then go into deliberation where commissioners discuss each application without, excuse me, with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. We will then vote on each application and the results of that voting can be found from the planning department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or we can call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. It does not mean that they are directly involved with the application or the applicant, but depending on circumstances, ethical rules require the recusal even if there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead. A reminder that the planning commission makes all final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of those decisions to the circuit court. The planning commission is strictly a recommending body for rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments. The city council makes the final decision on those applications and all appeals of city council decisions are to the circuit court. At this time, if you're following your brackets, please turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate and electronic devices to the off position. Commissioners and staff, please turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call the roll, myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Kirk Mate, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Ms. Shirley Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Josh Woods, Mr. Harry Brisland, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We have a quorum and I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda with thirteen items listed.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for the agenda passes. We will move into the first two items on the agenda which are holdovers. Number one on the agenda is a subdivision at Butler Esau subdivision at 1852 and 1856 Butler Street. It's a subdivision of two lots at a quarter acre. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the five listed conditions on the agenda?
We are.
Believe I heard him say all considerations have been made for the updated design.
The only thing we've received is something that shows this particular lot as having one home on it. What the staff report is pointing out, and I just want to make sure that the applicant understands, is that this entire property going all the way to the corner existed as one lot. What was previously proposed was creating a lot here which is roughly 4,400 square feet and then the balance of the property here. That came up at the last meeting, we identified issues, and the applicant submitted a revised plat to address those issues. What is currently before you now omits the property at the corner. The corner property is owned by an entity that sold off this portion here back in the nineties. They still own the corner parcel. So what we have before the commission at this moment is strictly this lot. What staff is recommending is that the entirety of the property be in, participate in this application and be divided equally down the middle. The two lots would be substandard by roughly 300 square feet each, but if it proceeds as proposed, this lot would be compliant. The other lot, which is not a legal lot, which when built upon would have to come back to the commission, would be almost 2,000 square feet too small. So I'm going through that long drawn-out discussion to make sure the applicant understands what those conditions will require.
So it already was, effectively it was already two lots, unlike it looks like on our...
No.
Right there, it looks like it's one lot.
It, from a lot standpoint, legal lot of record, it's all one lot. From a tax parcel standpoint, you have a parcel here at the corner owned by someone who then illegally sold off back in the nineties that parcel.
Yeah.
No, this is just the northern parcel where two structures are currently located. The applicant has provided us something that shows both of those structures are to come down and one compliant home built here. It does not take into account this roughly 4,000 square foot parcel at the corner.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
To the applicant, what got us here, I guess, is this was a tax sale, right? Am I correct in, this was purchased under a tax lien or tax sale? Am I thinking right? Am I got the right property?
Forgive me, I don't know the specifics of that. I'm the builder representing the homeowner who's over there. He, we're in a disaster recovery program rebuilding the home. So we're going to demolish both the structures and rebuild one compliant structure on the one lot.
Okay. Gotcha.
One structure, one lot, that's what I heard.
But the plat that the commission has in front of them right now is strictly, please ignore this bold line here, this area here that says vacant land, the plat we have in our possession right now does not include that. It only creates this one lot where the two structures are located. So the commission can deal with it now or later, but if you deal with it later, you're not going to be able to create a compliant lot for the corner.
Yeah, I think the tricky part was kind of maybe messing this up is what we're looking at shows a lot one and a lot two. Lot one being where there's already a house on it and we're calling that now lot one.
Some of the applicant materials for consideration.
Yeah, it looks like whatever information that they submitted.
So there are two plaques. The most recent one that's updated should be in there as just the single, excuse me, the single lot that's below. There's two plaques in that folder. It should be prefaced with the sign.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So how far out of compliance is that? I don't know if you can guesstimate, but that small lot that's not included, the lot that somebody else owns, how far out of whack are we on that?
It's roughly two-thirds compliant. And they, that at the corner, they're the ones that sold this balance.
One final clarity piece for me, the structures that are currently on lot one that we see on this plat right there, those are being torn down?
Yes.
Okay, I'm with you now.
And just as a point of clarification to make sure we're all on the same page, so the plat that is before us for consideration shows a legal lot of record to be created, roughly sixty-three hundred and thirty square feet, and a remainder lot to be forty-one hundred square feet. And what staff is recommending is essentially just split, you know, the frontage along Butler Street right down the middle to create two equally sized lots of roughly fifty-seven hundred square feet.
You have two things. One, your geom, your, what's before you now does not take into account the forty, 4,400 square foot parcel.
Correct.
You're completely kicking the can on that one.
Correct.
Doesn't your proposal, Margaret, of splitting it down the middle make this gentleman or this owner give up land that he owns? Wait a minute, hold on, we're trying to figure it out.
Okay, this parcel here where it says vacant land, that owner sold off this.
Correct.
But we are now, the person that owns this, you're correct, they would be modifying by roughly between fifteen hundred and 2,000 square feet.
So he'd have to deed back to the front owner part of the property he's purchased.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't force that. We can't force him to do that.
Okay.
I mean, it was a good, if it's all one owner, it'd be a great, great option, but we can't force him to give fifteen, twenty, thirty feet back.
If we end up with two lots, the lots end up being, as they are, they end up being the size of the tax parcels as they're shown on there. So one, one really small lot and then one actually legal lot of record that's over 7,200 square feet.
Well, based on what you have right now, you're going to have one lot. The other lot, the other parcel comes later. It's still not a legal lot of record in any way, shape, form, or fashion.
But the, if the commission takes it up and approves it moving forward, the lot line can't be down the center of the hole today. It's got to be like it's shown on this drawing to follow the tax parcels. Okay.
So the applicant's representatives at the podium at the bottom of the stairs, the applicant himself is here, did you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay, please, sir. And remember, state your name and your address for the record.
Lawrence Kane, 201.
To the microphone, sir.
20147, Lawrence Kane. And on the property top, speaking of, I had two houses on there and they finna build, but they want to tap both of them down. And the second house is, I can fix it myself, so I don't know why they want to tear them both down. If they could just take the lot and split it half and half and I keep both of my lots and my house, the second house.
Well, that's what we were just all discussing this last five minutes or so is how we can legally, with the plaques and with the tax parcels, how we can do this. So if I can get some confirmation as to what the commission needs to make on a recommendation.
Sir, were you just talking about cutting this lot into two and keeping one? Now you're creating two lots even smaller at that point, one house with each lot. Is that what you just said?
Right.
That's not what we're considering, I don't think, today at all.
And the challenge was you wouldn't be able to, with already, with one house already on the lot, you wouldn't be able to get a building permit to build another house on that same lot.
Right.
You're going to have to end up with a situation where you have one house on one lot, not two houses on one lot.
So I can't have my both houses on?
No.
So my house...
They could be connected, you could work with the building department and maybe they're connected some way that make the building codes, but as it exists today with two separate houses on one lot, it's, you couldn't, you couldn't do that.
A survey couldn't come out and split it, okay. All right. But I don't lose none of my property, it's all still mine, right?
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to sort out is, you've got a unique situation here.
Okay.
And we're trying to get you rectified.
Okay, I just lose both houses.
This is similar to one we had a year ago that came before us twice, I believe, where they wanted to subdivide the back lot to build another house and, remember that one? Okay. We've had this situation before and turned it down for these same reasons.
That we were dealing with somebody that's done it in the past twelve months.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'll go ahead and ask, because we can bring this up during our deliberation, is there anyone else here to speak for this applicant, excuse me, application? Is there one here to speak against this application? All right, seeing none, for the sake of time and the number of items on the agenda, we will be coming back to number one during deliberation where we can sort all this out. That might give staff enough time to kind of give us a game plan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number two, Mr. Kenny Nichols is recused. This is a dual application, holdover, subdivision and a modification, 3201 Airport Boulevard and 410 and 450 Bel Air Boulevard, re-subdivision of lot one and re-subdivision of lot two at Bel Air Mall. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement, sir, with the seven listed conditions of the subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Are you understanding of the, what the commissioners need to consider is in the modification, there are eight items there. Are you in understanding of those eight items?
Yes.
And then if approved on the modification, there are eight listed conditions there. Are you in agreement with the eight listed conditions on the modification?
Yes.
The applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item number two at Bel Air Boulevard and Airport Boulevard? Is there anyone here to speak against this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. We're now in the section of new items. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Number three, on the agenda, 5425 U.S. Highway 90 West, Tillman Square subdivision, a re-subdivision of lots two and four, at just under, or just right at seven and three-quarters of an acre. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present, are you in agreement with the ten listed conditions?
Yeah.
The applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will move on to number four. So subdivision at 100, Hardwood Lane, the Waterways subdivision, two lots at just under 27 acres. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the twelve listed conditions for the subdivision? The applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing none, we will move on. Number five, on the agenda, at 1582 Leroy Stevens Road, the Griffin Place subdivision. Have notes on here for staff, consideration of a holdover request until the April 18th meeting. Comments from staff on that holdover? Anything needed? Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the holdover? They'd like to talk about it. All right, come on down, please, sir. Just for notes, the holdover is recommended for addressing the revision of the plat to illustrate the ingress and egress easements that are at least 24 feet in width and revision of plat to depict a flagged lot that would allow proposed lot two to have frontage on Leroy Stevens Road. Your name, sir, for the address, or for the record.
Tony Cooper, Berkshire Hathaway Cooper &amp; Company Commercial Real Estate.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, go ahead.
I'm here representing the two sellers, Tom and John Griffin. They have property, their business is located near this lot. What they're trying to do is take an existing lot and divide it and sell off a building that's on the front of the lot. So there's, we can't be moving the buildings or anything, but what I'm hoping to do is to get maybe a favorable way that we can put this together because they have a purchaser that wants to buy the building, but his, his offer was written to the fact that if he can, we can get this done, he'll, he'll close the property. So we could probably go with the holdover if we can work out, I think, that, that area about coming in with 25 feet, we could, we could deed the 25 feet where the easement is right there. And we can also deed another section of property that will give a nice turn area to come into the building. I don't know whether that's something the staff could live with or not, but if they can, we'd sure like to know now, you know, so, so we can tell this buyer one way or the other if, if we can do this deal. So what do you think?
All right, Ms. Cooper, thank you. I'm going to let staff make comments.
We've got to know where it's coming from and how you're going to, how that's going to happen because the frontage shown for that easement is like 18 feet wide. So if there's going to be more frontage, a wider easement, a turnaround for the fire department, et cetera, we've got to have a plat that illustrates that.
Well, maybe we'll be able to provide that for you. Can I show you something that I just thought of? You got that drawing? I don't know if we're talking, see, I don't know if we're talking about the same thing. This is, this is Mr. Gerald Smith, he's our surveyor, but he's...
That must be you.
It is what it is, in other words, this building has been here since probably I was a boy, I guess, I don't know, I'm not that old, but this building's been here. There's about an 18-foot easement between the buildings to get to the building in the rear. The owners would like to sell it, they have a purchaser for it, so if there's a way we can work it out, we're willing to do it. They weren't in the zoning department when this all came about, so we're willing to, whatever's feasible, we're willing to do that, but it, you just can't tear the building down to get, to make it, to make it work.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Definitely understand the concerns and I know this was built out the, out in the county and I like to call it the Wild West out there. So, but, I mean, I know you can't, can't move the building, there's got to be some other options that we, we kind of explore unfortunately and, you know, we're, we're not just playing for tomorrow, we're playing for, you know, years down the road. You know, the use of the building, I mean, I, I'd like to see, but, you know, in the city now, so, you know, kind of, kind of got to play by the UDC on that.
Gerald can tell you a way it can be done and handled. It may not be perfect because of the zoning things, but I think we can meet everything on that list and provide enough access to come in there so the seller can get his property in back without changing what's there. I mean, what's there is there, you know, so he's using it that way now.
Yeah.
Mr. Cooper, can you submit those revisions no later than April 8?
We sure can.
And then just on the planning side, the staff side of the house, we'd be seeking waivers, I guess, is what that would look like.
Yeah, we'd be looking for a possible waiver if we can do that.
More than likely, but it would also need to be by April 1st.
Oh, it says April, revision submitted no later than April 8 on my agenda, but is it April 1 on the master?
Yes, because if they create additional lots, we're going to have to send out updated notice and I want to allow for compliance for that. So I would prefer to bump it to the first.
We'll do whatever you need. We can make that.
We've got, we've got two heads in agreement there.
A quick question for staff. The, the easement minimum 24 feet in width, is that codified in the UDC?
That's what's required for a two-way drive.
As I look at this, you know, just hopefully, hopefully saving you some time, you're either going to have to figure out a way to get six feet of property to the north or look at maybe going to the south of your property where you're 25 feet away from your property line there. So just plant some seeds with it, you might need to look at it carefully because you're, you're not six inches away from getting to 24 feet, you're six feet away from it. So just know that going into, into your reconsiderations of what you can resubmit.
I hear what you're saying. The problem is, we only get, probably got about 20 feet on the other side that's, and there's air conditioners and all kind of stuff over there.
I, I get it, it's not the physical building though, but, but...
If we can, if we can get revisions to the best of your ability, then this, this committee can...
We'll talk to them and if they can come up with, if they can agree on what we can do, then we can work it out.
Agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Cooper, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item number five? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number six, subdivision at 916 Church Street, residences at Oakley subdivision. It's a subdivision of seven lots at seven tenths of an acre. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the ten listed conditions for the subdivision?
I'd like to request two waivers.
Please come down, state your name and address for the record and we'll see which ones...
Trey Cordy, I live in Fairhope, 101 Spring Park Drive, but I'm one of the, I'm with the builder and the owner of this project.
Okay.
So there's, we're, we're okay with everything. There were two waivers and the staff report said we would, they didn't, I don't know if y'all said y'all would support them or not, but one was the corner radius on lot one. It currently is a 15-foot radius and that's what we planned for. Our lots are narrow and I was hoping we could get a waiver for that. National Association of City Transportation Officials has a urban street design guideline and they recommend no more than 15 feet and mostly because of the way the sidewalks come and larger radiuses kind of messed that up. So we would, I think y'all have probably approved that once or twice before. This is in the historical district of Oakley, so I don't believe the other corners even have a radius, I don't know if that's a reason, but anyway, that's one waiver. Second waiver is the width to depth ratio, y'all, the staff says it's exceeded. It says y'all have approved that one other time nearby. And what we're trying to do is we have to meet the minimum 4,000 square foot lot dimensions. We want all of the lots facing Church Street, so it just kind of falls out that the lots are a little extra deep and we're putting a common driveway on the rear to access the garages. So those are the two waivers we would like to request. Everything else is fine with us.
So we're looking at number two on the conditions? Any comments from staff or the applicants?
Yes, if you noticed in the staff report and the considerations, it... Yes, if you noticed in the staff report and the considerations, it would be a waiver of the width to depth ratio, and then the 25-foot radius at the corner would be approved if city engineering was agreeable to that.
Yeah, and that's the six, C3 is the depth to width ratio?
C, oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And, and yes, engineering is okay with the reduced radius.
Question for staff on the, mentions the front yard setbacks. This is RB zoning, my understanding, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, is on the side yard setbacks, there's nothing in RB, or it's zero to five-foot side yard setbacks, and then the historic overlays use that look around within 150 feet?
That's correct. One of the things I believe that was in the staff report is that the setbacks should simply reference the UDC because actually in the front, it's a minimum or maximum based on the historic district overlay, and that's just way too cumbersome to try and depict on a plat. I didn't answer your question, did I?
The staff report mentions the front yard, and I was curious about the side yards, and it kinda gets to the waiver issue, I mean, this is a lot of density for the neighborhood, but...
It is, but it is compliant density, and in terms of the setbacks, all of that would be regulated by the historic district overlay.
Yeah.
And that is what we want referenced in, on the final plat rather than an actual line. The sides, though, you are correct, zero or five.
All the commissioners in understanding with that? Any questions or comments from commissioners?
So these lot sizes is generally 28 feet, the way, and I'm totally in favor of the curb cut radius, I'm Oakley guy up here, I don't, traffic is an issue at that intersection, expanding the radius is just gonna speed up people taking a right turn, and visibility's terrible right there, the houses are built right up on the road, have no problem with these setbacks at all, more just curious about, it's a 28 feet, how, there wouldn't be any side yard setbacks. The build density on this, what are you envisioning the size of these houses being? Is this similar to the, the Tonti project?
Yeah, we, we built the Tonti place, so it's actually the same floor plans, the same widths, same layouts, except we have a little bit extra depth, so we elongated the plans, that's really all we did. So you, we have a one-foot side setback, basically zero lot line, but it's one foot off, that wall on that side has no windows, so you have a, you have a 10-foot side setback on one side, then you have an extra one foot, so basically it's 11 foot. The Tonti actually has 12 foot, this, these courtyards are one foot narrower, but, you know, if you go over to the Tonti and they're kinda stepped in there, they, I mean, some people don't like to be next to each other, but it does work for this type of living, and we, and on these, though, we have pushed the houses back about 19 feet, so the front yards will be about a 19-foot front yard, the Tonti, they're right up on the sidewalk, so you have a front yard with a front porch, and then a side courtyard, and then no rear yard. So the density is, we, it's .7 acres, we have seven units, so it's 10 units per acre, which is right on what the zoning allows.
Yeah. Well, I was the neighborhood president years ago with two or three different iterations of this project, and I think there's a lot of excitement in the neighborhood about it. I think a lot of people appreciate you doing residential on a, what could be business lot, so I'm fully in favor of those.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone else here in the audience to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Cordy, we will move on to number seven on the agenda. Some modification at 6109 Howells Ferry Road, major modification of a previously approved PUD allowing multiple buildings on a single building site. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. And ma'am, there are considerations for these commissioners, there's eight considerations for modification, and if approved, there are 10 listed conditions for the modification. So I wanted to make sure that you were understanding of those eight considerations that could be a part of this recommendation, and then those conditions. Applicant is present and in agreement on modification considerations and conditions. Is there anyone else in the audience to speak for this agenda item at 6109 Howells Ferry Anyone here to speak against it? And seeing as it's a major modification of a PUD with multiple buildings on a single building site, any questions or comments from commissioners? All right. Moving on to number eight, Mr. Kirk Matei will be recused, still maintain a forum, some modification at numerous addresses at Dunlap Drive. This is through, for Ostell, major modification of a previously approved PUD for multiple buildings on multiple parcels, shared access and parking. Is the applicant present? Applicant's present. Comment, sir? Please come on down.
Hi, I'm Joey Nutley, reside in Fairhope, work for Ostell. We are fine with the considerations that are listed, just wanted to say thank you for getting us on the agenda, thank you to staff for working with us. This was a modification that was dictated by Aldott in a very short timeframe, so this, this has to do with the big bridge that's coming across, so just wanted to say thank y'all for your considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Nutley, and just for the record, the eight considerations, and then if approved, 12 listed conditions. You're in agreement with those?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, we'll move on. Number nine on the agenda is a rezone, it's 5672 Commerce Boulevard West, we can welcome back Mr. Matei.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe this one, as well as the other one on Commerce Park, the applicant is requesting a holdover until the April 18th meeting.
So this will be number nine?
And 11.
And 11.
And I believe he's ready to waive.
Just to confirm, you have capacity for your April 18th agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with, okay, we'll take them separately, just on number nine, you're in agreement with the holdover, tell, great, okay, great. Because it's on the agenda, number nine, is anyone else here to speak for this agenda Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing none, we'll move on. Number 10, this is a dual application of a subdivision and a sidewalk waiver request at 2200 West I-65 Service Road, fireside of Mobile subdivision. The subdivision is two lots, 18 and a half acres, and the request to waive the construction of a sidewalk along West I-65 Service Road South. Is the applicant present? On the subdivision, are you in agreement with the nine listed conditions? Applicant is present and in agreement. On the sidewalk waiver, we'll just, we'll have to discuss that when it would come to it, but if you'd like to make comments on that, please come on down.
Jerry Bird, Burt's Inn, 2609 Halls Mill Road for the owner. We are requesting the waiver of the sidewalk. The, from Government Boulevard, the Halls Mill Road is approximately eight tenths of a mile. This orange site in the middle is our property, which, there is a ditch running, a large ditch running this way, and at the south end, there's a ditch, and at the north end of our property, there's a ditch on it that runs all the way up to Highway 90, and, and a ditch that will run all the way down to Halls Mill Road. These properties, north and south of us, are developed with no sidewalks, which that's not necessarily a reason, but there, that ditch that I'm referring to is straddle of the property line. Our property line is in the middle of it, on our property, it's like 18 feet wide, there is a 10-foot easement from the property line on our property, given just one foot behind the ditch to, to put it in. We don't see the need for a sidewalk since it won't go anywhere with developed properties. Along back across the rear of our property is an asphalt bike trail that runs from Government Boulevard, and actually continues all the way down to Isaiah Road, following Montlamar Creek. If somebody wanted to walk up Highway 90, they could access and walk on the bike trail. And that's the reason we feel like that the sidewalk should be waived.
Any questions or comments from commissioners for Mr. Bird? All right, thank you, Mr. Bird. Anyone else here to speak for this agenda item, either the subdivision or the sidewalk waiver?
Charles Tisher, 3901 Spring Hill Avenue, I just wanted to clarify, the intent is also to provide a gate and access to the bike path on the back of the property for this development, which is going to be two buildings of Class A apartments, that way they can access all the way up to Government Boulevard, businesses there, all the way south where there's really nothing they would access anyway, it's all industrial and construction companies, that's it.
So, so you mean that you're gonna have a gate on the service road?
No, not on the service road, on the back end, where the bike path is, the intent is to provide our sidewalk to tie into that path back there and provide gated access for our residents.
Like an internal sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number 11. Said we would take it separately, it's been recommended for holdover till April 18th, do I have the number correct?
Just to clarify, the applicant's requesting the holdover.
Okay.
And just to confirm, that is to the April meeting? Yes, which will be April 18th.
Number 11's holdover for the 18th, but since it's on the agenda, is there anyone here to, and this is a dual application of a subdivision and a rezone at 5632 and 5572 Commerce Boulevard West, the Mobile Commerce Park subdivision. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Number 12, another dual application, this is a subdivision at 1100 Spring Hill Avenue, and a request for a rezone from R2, B1, and B3 to Community Business Urban, all B3.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind you, Mr. Dorsey's recusing.
Thank you. We have a recusal, Mr. Dorsey. Go ahead, Mr. Bird.
All right. All right, yes, we are asking for rezoning, and that is the reason for the subdivision. Subdivision is made up of four parcels, or the property is made up of four parcels of property. We're trying to convert it into a single lot with a single zoning so that they can add a parking facility in the back of the property. They're in need of additional parking, they have the room, our north property line is in line with the property across Pine Street, which is Zone B3, and feel like it will not cause an adverse effect on the neighborhood. They may park out there now, it's grass whenever they have meetings, so it really does not create a, a noise or any adverse effect on the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, those were comments on the rezone. On the subdivision, you're in agreement with the nine listed conditions?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, any questions or comments from commissioners on this property? Strikers Club subdivision, 1100 Spring Hill Avenue. Anyone in the audience to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? We will still have a quorum with Mr. Dorsey's recusal. Number 13, final agenda item, it's a dual application, subdivision and rezone at 3300 Knollwood Drive and 3401, 3421 Medical Park Drive. Due to issues regarding notifications, application is, needs to be held over to the April 18th meeting. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
In agreement with that? Applicant is, is present and understands holdover? Anyone else here to speak for agenda item number 13? Anyone here to speak against it?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, just so I know what we got going on here, based on staff reports and documentation and everything, that the largest lot, the triangular shaped lot, that's to remain R1, right?
That is correct. That is not a part of the rezoning application, it is simply to establish it as a legal lot of record.
Okay.
Only the property that goes from Knollwood to Gerby along Medical Park Drive, that is the only rezoning.
Thank you.
One question for staff, can we ver, or can we or did we verify that that Medical Park Drive is in fact a public right-of-way and not a private road? I know when the hospital was there, there were some streets there, I'm not sure if they were all public or private, or which one, we might, we might need to help check that, if this is gonna be held over, just to be certain. Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's up in the air, we were involved in some of the sales this park, and my law firm was, and Medical Park Drive really has been treated like a public right-of-way, it's got public city signs on it.
Has it, has it?
That white strip right there is the part, the, it is a public right-of-way, and Mr. Bird is filing a vacation request for that to replace it with that access there, and as you can see, right at the top there, that's gonna be dedicated to the city.
I just, I just wanted, wanted to verify, I know there's, there's been some changes around there, right.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners? All right, that will close the public hearing session. We will now move back to agenda item number one, which was a holdover at 1852 and 1856 Butler Street. Which was a holdover at eighteen fifty-two and eighteen fifty-six Butler Street.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, it looks like our applicant and representative are, are not in the audience, do, is anybody know if they are just outside? Okay. Go ahead.
Um, so, this is probably a Doug question. So, what, what is our motion option here, because I'll just say, I'm not gonna be voting to, to have a taking of someone's property just to make a line run through the middle of the lot.
My legal counsel's gonna answer that question for you.
A lawyer's lawyer.
Can we put a condition on it where there's only one lot allowed on the newly created Lot One, if, whether something is demoed or added on to? And my notes to myself was just with a condition of one or both houses being removed, or because I think I get what they, they wanna have one house on there.
The council to the council has some recommendations.
Let's hear them.
Delete number one. Uh, number two, and we can alter it that there be only one home on the proposed lot. Delete number three. Number four, be modified to read the illustration of the required five-foot minimum building setback line along Butler Street. And then number five, revision of the plat to label the lot with its size and both square feet and acres after any required dedication. That would be the recommendation. I will clarify, you're only approving one lot, it's just that northernmost piece.
And, and it would need to include engineering comments too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Let's make that one, two, three, condition number four, full compliance with engineering comments.
And um go ahead.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, if you'll take that as, as a motion, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded with the amendments and adjustments. Any discussion?
Um, I guess just, uh, uh, so at the condition to move forward, right now we got two dwellings, I guess, on the property. Um, both dwellings would need to be demolished, and one dwelling moving forward would need to be constructed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Woods, could you repeat that?
Um, so right now, uh, based on uh Google Maps, based on what we see here, uh, currently, there, there are two, two dwellings. Um, uh, or could be perceived as two dwellings, um, those would both need to be demolished in one dwelling.
The way we worded it is that there be only one dwelling on Lot One.
Okay.
How they go about doing that, they have some options.
Okay, okay.
The, the other thing I want to bring up is I think the engineering comments may need some editing. F and J? Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions, or comments from commissioners? We have a, uh, motion that's been seconded for approval of the subdivision with modifications, amendments, if you will, to the conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number two, we have a recusal, Mr. Kenny Nichols, we still have a quorum. Holdover dual application of a subdivision and modification at thirty-two oh one Airport Boulevard and four-ten and four-fifty Bel Air Boulevard.
I would move to approve the subdivision subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And on the modification, applicant was present and in agreement with the eight considerations and eight conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A through F.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the modification passes. Well, welcome back, Mr. Nichols, moving on to the new items on the agenda, number three, subdivision at forty-five, fifty-four twenty-five U.S. Highway ninety west. Applicant is present and in agreement with the ten listed conditions.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes, number four, subdivision at Har, one hundred Hardwood Lane. The applicant is present and in agreement with the twelve listed conditions. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number five, this is a subdivision with pending transaction or potential transaction at fifteen eighty-two Leroy Stevens Road. Uh, applicant is present, discussion on a couple of different items on this plat. And this, uh, I think we're in agreement for an April one, so notifications could be, uh, put out in April eighteenth meeting, entertain a motion.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for April eighteen, holdover passes. Number six, subdivision at nine sixteen Church Street, residences at Oakley.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we need to throw in one more waiver of the subjects, which is six, C, two, Perrin B. That's lot width. Uh, six, C, two, Perrin B.
What are you saying after two?
Like B in parentheses.
Parentheses.
Perrin, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I've worked with lawyers too much.
Uh, the applicant is present, and, uh, we had discussion on these items specifically, and in agreement with those conditions that are listed with the waivers just mentioned. Entertain a motion.
We move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, waiving section six C three and six C two B of the subdivision regulations and waiving condition number two, uh, in, in replacing the twenty-five-foot corner radius with a fifteen-foot radius. Second?
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the subdivision passes. Number seven, this is a modification application at sixty-one oh nine Howells Ferry Road. Applicant is present, applicant is understanding of the considerations that we will make for the, uh, that count in eight, and that's, uh, A through H, and then the conditions of which there are ten listed, again, this is a major modification of a previously approved PUD to allow multiple buildings in a single building site. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A through H. Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the modification passes. Number eight, Kurt Matei will be recused, this is a modification at multiple addresses on Dunlot Drive, Oster USA. Uh, the applicant is present and in agreement with the considerations for commissioners, there are eight in count, and then the twelve listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation, with findings of fact A through H. Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number nine, application for rezone at fifty-six seventy-two Commerce Boulevard West. Uh, it's been recommended for holdover until April eighteenth. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, holdover passes. Number ten, dual application of a subdivision and a sidewalk waiver at twenty-two hundred West I sixty-five Service Road. Uh, the applicant is present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions on the subdivision, we'll take these separately. Entertain a motion for the subdivision, this is two lots, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment first of all, if I may, um, this is for the benefit of my fellow chairman, I mean, my fellow commissioners. All those service roads along I sixty-five are typically owned by ALDOT, this one particular one was accepted by the city many years ago, so it is a little bit of unique, is, and I say that just as we get a lot of applications that come in here, so it is unique that this is in fact a city road as opposed to an ALDOT road. Some other comments were made about the, about the walking path to the rear, that's actually a MARS, uh, easement that, to maintain the, the sewer lines, it's not actually a dedicated trails, I just wanted to go into the record. Some of the other trails that we have throughout the city have actually gone through a dedication process of a right-of-way, this just happens to be a paved access route, uh, it just happens to be along that trail, so I just wanted to clear that up for the record so that, that y'all knew what it was, and as for the ditch being in the right-of-way, I guess there was an easement that was given at some point, other than the document Mr. Bird showed, showed an easement at the ditch, so I guess at some point we must have gotten probably a drainage easement that, that encompassed the width of that ditch, um, he made a point that the ditch was, you know, the property line was down the center of the ditch and that there was an easement there, so um, just some walkie stuff going there with just the way the lines are following, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear. It just doesn't look exactly like it is, or it's not actually as it appears to be. Yeah, I think what, what, he, one of the drawings he had on where it shows the, the property line, he held up another cross-section that showed that there was an easement all the way over to the top, to, to the left, you know, that would encompass the entire ditch, so I'm, I'm just assuming at some point there was a drainage easement that was probably dedicated to encompass, then, to encompass the ditch. Uh, so, so not a sidewalk easement, and I think he's saying there's not enough room to construct it there, but I think that drawing is missing, at least what Mr. Bird presented to us, that there was in fact an easement up there. So, you know, a sidewalk could only be constructed if the ditch were piked, or there was a sidewalk easement that encroached into the, into the property, so I just, you know, that's just I think what he's saying, as it, as it lies today, they can't construct a sidewalk without a donation of an easement, you know, or either committing that, changing that to right-of-way at some point. Um and he's just got a lot of weird things laying on top of one another. And, and the big take, and the main purpose of this was, we have so many of these applications that come before us regarding those service roads, and just that one service road is unique in that the city council did accept that one, I think in the seventies, uh, or might, might have even been in the sixties. All the other service roads are in fact ALDOT service roads.
All right, thank you, Mr. Amberger, for comments on this agenda item. So we will take them separately on the subdivision. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes on the request for a sidewalk waiver along West I sixty-five Service Road South. Properly moved and seconded on the sidewalk waiver. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, was that?
Ours.
Two, one, two, three. So we're good, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Sidewalk waiver is approved. Number eleven on the agenda item. Dual application subdivision at fifty-six thirty-two and fifty-five seventy-two Commerce Boulevard West. We'll take them separately. Oh, excuse me. Holdover recommendation for April eighteenth.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for April eighteenth, I was reading the notes for number twelve, which is dual application of a subdivision and rezone at eleven hundred Spring Hill Avenue, Strikers Club, Mr. Dorsey is recused, we still maintain a quorum. Uh, entertain a motion on the subdivision with their non-listed conditions, which were agreed upon.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the subdivision passes. And for the rezone to, uh, combine R two, B one, and B three to single, single B three.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for the rezone as well. Last but not least, number thirteen has been recommended for holdover to April eighteenth. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Holdover passes. Our motion to holdover passes. That concludes the agenda items for today, we do have filing deadline and meeting date scheduled, I thought we voted on this.
If you recall, we had been going quarterly and then maybe bumping it a month or so, uh, based on the applications and the rhythm of the meetings, we went ahead and proposed for one meeting a month through the end of the fiscal year, so that's what is before you now, is the filing deadline through the September nineteenth meeting.
Does it require a motion and a, and a vote and approval?
Yes, please.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion on this? Does everybody feel like the meetings, agenda item, volume, as well as rhythm of meetings is, is okay to maintain a one meeting per month?
Has there been any feedback, or is anybody here, here to comment on these monthly meetings?
Typically, if somebody's not happy, we hear about it, and we have not, we haven't had any negative feedback. Uh, due to the UDC and a lot of the flexibility that it offers, as well as the revised subdivision regulations and the allowance for minor subdivisions, it's just allowed things to move, to move more administratively.
And just from my knowledge, do you know what your volume of agenda items is for the eighteenth of April?
That's true, uh, but I do care, approximately fourteen, so.
Roughly the same today.
Exactly.
All right.
So this is your final planning commission meeting?
No, that's not until July.
Okay, okay, good.
We've got party supplies on order.
Party.
August.
Any other comments on the, on the dead, filing deadline proposal and dates?
I would move to adopt those dates.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion for the filing deadline and meeting dates passes to the remainder of the fiscal year for twenty twenty-four. Any other comments? Meeting adjourned.